On the call to present the results of our audit report to you.
Morning, baby one.
Morning.
I'm hoping I can share a screen before it's over with here, but the main thing that you hire us as an audit firm to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issued an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote clean report. And with that, there's a couple of things I'm gonna hit highlights on the document, just so you know. There were no significant audit findings. We didn't have any difficulty in performing the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated November eighteenth. Were unaware that management consulted with any outside auditors or accountants. Again, no other findings or issues. The good thing, and soon as I can get where I can share my screen, I'm trying to, on the numbers, the total fund balance in the general fund increased by about eight thousand dollars from two million six hundred and sixty thousand to two million six sixty-eight. Unassigned or restricted fund balance is about sixty-eight hundred dollars. The unassigned fund balance is a million fourteen. Total general fund expenditures were four point three million. The fund balance available was sixty-one point four five percent. And the unassigned fund balance as a percentage was twenty-three point three six. And the cash in the general fund was two million seven hundred and seventy thousand. Cash in the capital outlay fund was eight hundred and forty-five thousand. Cash in the other restricted funds was four million four hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred. Child nutrition had cash at nine hundred and forty thousand. Fund balance in the general fund was two million six sixty-eight. And capital outlay, uh, fund balance is a million sixty-seven. Fund balance restricted is four point five million. Net position in child nutrition is three hundred and eighteen thousand negative. And we talked about that in prior years. That kinda took a hit when OPEB, but you can see from earlier that the cash position in the net child nutrition is still really strong at nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. Overall, the breakdown of general fund revenues is four point three million. We said the total expenditures was four point three million. There's actually a profit of eight thousand, which we talked about. The state public school fund was twenty-two million six sixty-nine. And the total federal grants fund is two million ninety-three thousand. It's the federal grants fund has kinda been declining over the last several years. And the state public school fund varies depending on lots of circumstances as it, as the funds request goes in. I'm all, I know you don't have the screen, but I'll make sure you get a copy of this presentation summary to review. And as you look at it, please feel free to give me a call. My number will be on the presentation summary. You can call me anytime. Happy to answer if I happen not to be in the office. Call me on my cell. I'll go through anything with you to make sure you fully understand it. So some of these charts and graphs may not mean as much since you can't see them. I'm trying to get where I can share. Fund balance in general fund again states is, has been stable for the past five years. The unassigned fund balance has dipped because it's a little bit more restricted. The analysis revenue, over and under expenses before transfers. Capital outlay fund had a big bump this year simply because some of the money wasn't spent, but it's still there to be spent. The child nutrition net assets, as we said earlier, has had a dip, but it's all because of OPEB. Cash is still strong. Total cash across the board is eight million nine eighty-six. And total fund balances across the board is eight million and thirteen thousand. Breakdown general fund expenditures, for the most part, is the system-wide support from county. And then the state and federal public funds coming in. Again, the state was twenty-two million, the fed was two million ninety-three. If you go back five years, the state was twenty-one million eight forty-seven. And the federal was three million sixty-seven. So you can see where, as I said earlier, the fed has been declining. But again, the number one reason you hire us as an outside firm is to issue an opinion on the financials. We did not have any findings and we issued an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote clean report. And we do appreciate you allowing us to do the audit. We appreciate Cindy and her staff and all the other staff to deal with all the grants, et cetera. You being so kind and working with us so much. Been a challenging year for everybody and be able to do our job. They had to do some extra stuff to make it work. So we are very appreciative of that. And I'm very appreciative of you as a board for allowing us to do the audit. I know you don't have it in front of you, but if you, if you have had it, I think it's Cindy was gonna share. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me now.
Are there any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Say that again, sir?
Say, are there any questions for you from the rest of the board?
Mr. Chair, Reverend Sharon, I would like to know how soon can we expect to get that report?
I can have it emailed to you today. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's actually in Board Doc, I believe.
The Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, I'm looking at it now. What the auditor just presented is nine pages?
Yes, sir.
It's posted?
Mr. Thompson, I, just an outside question. How does Hartford County Public Schools compare with some other schools that you do as far as percentage of fund balance and that kinda stuff? I, I'd just like to know from, from a perspective on how we're doing compared to other people that you do. I don't need any figures exactly. I just want to know what your overall perception is of Hartford County's financials.
Overall, I think Hartford County's doing really well. Percentage-wise, it's probably ahead of several of the school systems we do. Some have really struggled over the last several years. One thing that has to be taken in consideration as you look at it, it's the fund eight, which is outside the general fund. And Hartford County is in good shape there as well. So overall, I would say good. Good to above good, if you will make, I wouldn't say great, but good.
But we're working on being great then, okay?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you set the bar a little high for us. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Thompson. And we look forward to doing business with you next year and years to come.
Thank you very much. Hope everyone has a nice Thanksgiving.
Do the same.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Cindy, any comments? Okay. Uh, if, if, if not, um, yeah, good job. We just have to be great next year. Um, uh, if not, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'd like to make a motion to go in the closed session.
Second that motion, Doc Sharon.
It's been promptly moved and seconded that we go into closed session. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. To our meeting, uh, we actually said the plan at, um, at, because we had some open sessions, uh, uh, information. And just for the information, um, I don't know where that is in here.
Two point three.
Uh, okay. Two point three, and we had the audit report. And because Mr. Thompson's not here, I'm gonna let, um, well, let's go to two point two, acceptance of the agenda. I don't think there's any additions. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second that motion, Doc Sharon.
It's promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is two point three, the audit report. Just for the, uh, public information, we earlier had, uh, Mr. Alan Thompson from Thompson Price, Scott Adams and Company, uh, public accountants, give us an audit report. And, um, we, we got a, a, a clean report. And I'm gonna turn it over to Cindy, uh, Martin, our finance director, so she can stand up and, and receive all the accolades that she does for, for, for having a great, uh, report. Uh, once again, I think this is four or five years in a row that we've had a clean report.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'd like you to stand up, take a bow, and tell us how great we did. For the public.
Uh, Mr. Alan Thompson from Thompson Price, Scott and Adams presented our audit report for the year ended June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, we received a clean audit opinion with no findings. Um, and all fund balances are in order and and he had no findings, no exceptions with those either.
Uh, which is, which is not always the case. Uh, I, I asked, uh, Mr. Thompson how we compared with, uh, with other counties he did. He said we were better than, than most. He didn't say we were great, so we do have some room till we can approve, that we can improve. But he said we were very, very good. And, and once again, I'd like to, uh, applaud Dr. Wright and Ms. Martin for the great job in finance. Um, it, it seems we keep doing that very, very well. Thank you, Ms. Martin. And thanks your staff. Uh, next is two point four, bulletin board, bulletin boards. Ms. Parker?
Good morning, Chair Shields, board members, Dr. Wright.
Morning.
Um, this month, November, was done by Riverview Elementary School Principal Lee Ford. And the creator of the two boards was Mr. Craig Dennis, the art teacher. The one in the hallway states, give thanks. It is not happy people who are thankful. It is thankful people who are happy. A great slogan. And the one that's in the boardroom is a fantastic slogan also. It says gobble up a good book. Um, and we just wanted to give Riverview a hand for two fantastic boards.
Uh, next is consideration of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, Dennis Deloche, I'd like the motion that we approve the board meeting minutes of October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty.
Second that Shield reported.
It promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, two point seven is New Husky Elementary School update. Dr. Wright?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're really excited about the progress that is being made at, uh, at the New Husky Elementary School. Uh, most of the first floor, uh, bare bones have been completed, uh, in the main building. And, uh, the flooring has been poured for the second floor. The walls are starting to go up. And, uh, probably my most favorite question, I went to get a bite to eat in town. And somebody asked me, Dr. Wright, is the roof gonna be red? Uh, and the reason why, reason why they asked me that question is, uh, the undersurface of the roof, uh, which is, uh, if you actually go up to the site, it, it looks like, for lack of a better expression, it looks like tar paper. But it's, it's a, uh, it is an insulation barrier, uh, that goes up before the roof. Uh, that is a bright red. And so, um, I told the student that, uh, that asked me that question. No, that's not the roof and it's gonna be a secret as to what color it's gonna be, so. But anyway, that, that's forthcoming. And, um, it, it is, uh, it is absolutely a joy to see the construction under place. Uh, we have, um, also recently, uh, a recent update. The, uh, the, the rough surface for the bus lot has also now been poured. Um, and, uh, we expect that to be, um, uh, mid-graded, uh, in the next couple of weeks. And the footings for, uh, the superintendent told me last week, the superintendent of the project told me that the for the auditorium should be poured, uh, by the end of this month. So, uh, of course, after that, you'll begin to see, uh, wall construction, uh, outer wall construction and so forth for, for the auditorium. Uh, everything is still on schedule. There should be no issues with, uh, being able to occupy the school, uh, for August of twenty-one. Uh, hopefully, we'll, we'll have a little bit of time before that. But, uh, everything is, uh, actually a little bit ahead of schedule, uh, with the work that they're doing. And, uh, we're, we're certainly, uh, pleased with the progress that's being made.
It's also not yellow, which is the foam they're spraying on the outside of the building.
That's right. Oh, yeah. Thank, thank you for reminding me of that, uh, 'cause people, I, I've gotten that question too. What is that yellow stuff on the outside of the building? So, uh, between the, uh, center block construction and the brick construction, bills actually gonna be, uh, bricked. Uh, there is a foam that is sprayed on and it hardens that further insulates and seals and everything before the brick can be laid. Thank, thank you for reminding me of that, Mr. Chair, 'cause I, I got that question too. It's amazing children, the, the questions that the children are asking me when I go uptown to shop or eat, so. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. Uh, any, any questions for Dr. Wright? Um, it's, uh, any public input? Okay, uh, next is, uh, four point one, Ms. Cherry.
Good morning, board. We have section four point one, resignations, retirements, transfers. And we have that information before you.
Next is, uh, recommend, uh, forward recommendations. Can we do these individually? As the recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
For four point two, certified recommendations, we have Macy Jernigan as teacher at Hartford County Middle School.
You get a recommendation coming from the administration? What's your plan?
Mr. Chad, Shield reported, I make a motion to approve this Jernigan coming from the middle school at this time.
Second. Mr. Chairman, Wendell Hall.
It's been promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have Helen Lassiter as EC teacher at Hartford County Middle School.
Make a motion that we approve Ms. Lassiter as presented?
Second, Reverend Sharon.
It's been promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have Christina Sim Smith as teacher at Hartford County Middle School.
I make a motion at this time to approve Ms. Smith.
Second motion, Reverend Sharon.
Okay, it's been promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Next, we have Mr. Jason Leach as principal at Hartford County High School.
Dennis Deloche, um, I make a motion that we approve Mr. Leach as being presented as principal of Hartford County High School.
Second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor that, that we approve, uh, Jason Leach as principal of Hartford County High School. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, we better do this by roll call, I guess.
Okay.
Um, all those in favor, if you'll say aye and tell me who you are, please.
Aye, Dennis Deloche.
Aye, Doc Sharon, James Sharon.
Uh, aye, David Shields.
No, Wendell Hall.
No, Shield reported.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is classified.
Okay, section four point two, classified recommendations. We have Vera Hall Reed as lead secretary at Hartford County Middle School. And Brianna Jordan as instructional partner at Riverview Elementary School.
Make a motion that we approve the recommendations as presented, Mr. Chairman? Wendell Hall?
Okay.
Second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Uh, okay.
James Sharon.
It's promptly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Three point, uh, four point three, additional employment.
Okay, we, for this section, we have Kimberly Winborn as AIG coordinator at Riverview Elementary for additional employment.
I make a motion at this time to approve Ms. Kimberly Winborn.
Second that motion, Doc Sharon.
It's been promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is, uh, safety and orderly schools for quarterly financial reports.
Good morning, board members, Chair Shields, Dr. Wright. You have before you the financial statement for the quarter ended Ju-, uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Are there any questions?
That's just information, right?
Yes.
Okay. Next, uh, budget amendments.
Also, you have budget amendment number one for the state public school fund. This is a decrease of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and two dollars. Uh, a large portion of that was the reduction for charter schools, which was a total of one hundred three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Also, you have budget amendment number two for the capital outlay fund, an increase of seven hundred thousand. And this is for the cost of the replacement school buses that are funded by DCI.
We have a request coming from the finance department and the administration on, on budget amendment.
Okay. Uh, I would like to know the number of students that we're talking about. And this money, is that automatically sent or do we send it?
No, the, uh, DCI withdraws those from
Withdraws it, right. Okay. But I would like to know. Make sure that the number is our number.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, that's a good point, 'cause I think sometimes, uh,
Yeah.
I think sometimes information is sent and the students never leave us, but, but DCI doesn't know that, so.
They don't know that, right. And a lot of times, it's already been done and, and within a kinda way, I think it's a good idea. I would leave it at that.
That's a great recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, so, we have on the floor, uh, budget amendments number one. We can do them individually or we can do them collectively, but the budget amendments, number one or number two? And number two?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, Wendell Hall, that we accept the budget amendments one and two as presented by the administration.
I second that, Shield reported.
It's promptly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, we're moving on down, six point one, superintendent's report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've got a few updates. Um, uh, wanna start out with, um, wanna start out with, uh, offering, uh, congratulations and, uh, thanks to, uh, Mr. David Shields, uh, who has served, uh, on our Board of Education for the last twenty years, starting in two thousand. Uh, and also as board chair for, I think, four out of my five years as superintendent here. So, uh, certainly wanna congratulate and thank you, uh, for your service. And, uh, we are presenting, uh, two plaques to him today.
It ain't a gold watch, I can tell you that.
Uh, let's see, we'll do this first, I buy that. Uh, this one is, uh, to Mr. David Shields, uh, chairman of the Hartford County Board of Education, uh, for your service, uh, most recent service, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. Congratulations to you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
And then the second one is, uh, to Mr. David Shields in recognition, in recognition of David L. Shields with sincere appreciation of your dedication and outstanding service to Hartford County Public Schools, two thousand to twenty twenty. And I almost wanna put in beyond, 'cause we don't expect you to go away and stay. We appreciate, uh, all that you've done for us and all that we know that you're gonna do to still support our students. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
Well, I, I'd like to thank the citizens of Hartford County for, uh, letting me serve for twenty years. It's, it's been great. And I, I think the school district has, has, uh, we're moving in the right direction. Uh, I, I think, I think, uh, it hadn't all been, uh, roses, but a lot of it has been. And as I think back on the twenty years, uh, which is an awful long time, um, uh, I, I, I get, uh, I'm still excited about Hartford County Public Schools. I'm still excited about where we're gonna go. And, 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 and now I hope I can contribute to the school system, uh, as a, as a layperson in the, in the county. Uh, and, and, and continue to support the school because, um, public, public schools are the only, only entity in the county that can affect every other budget item that the county has. And, and affect all the systems in the county. Um, and, and, and I keep saying that because it, it's, it's really, really important that the county commissioners fund the schools at an adequate level so that we can keep our staff. I'd love to see the, the supplements go from three I'd love to see the, the supplements go from three percent to five or six percent because that's an investment, not only for the school system, but it's an investment for every business that comes to this county. And, 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 and we can't ever forget that, that the, the very first question, I served as the county commissioner for eight years and the very first question New Corstil asked us was, how are your public schools? Very first question, because it affects what their, what their employees are gonna have to, have to, have to, how they're gonna have to spend their money if they don't think the public schools are, 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 are meet, meet the standards. And, and it's the first question every company asks because they're looking out for their employees. So, it's very, very important that we keep public schools pushed to the front. And I still say we're our best and worst enemy in that we do not publicize what we do great. And, and, and we just need to keep that up there, but anyway, I'm not gonna, uh, make this meeting last any longer. Uh, I appreciate serving with all of you guys and, and, and because I think, uh, we've made a, a, a good board and we hadn't always agreed and we've had some, 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 even some heated discussions, but, but, uh, I am really honored to have served with, uh, Wendell Hall, Sheila Porter, Dennis Deloach, and Dr. Sharon and the other, other members that are not on here named that I've served with because, uh, without you, the public school does not move forward, so thanks.
Good job.
Right, I, I have a.
The, the chairman.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege if, if I can.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, David. Thank you for your service personally. Uh, we came on in, in, in two thousand at the same time. And, uh, we know, uh, what it took, what it's gonna take. I thank you for putting up with me and my attitude and my thoughts and my, and my comments at times, but we have never, uh, held it against each other and I thank you for that. I wish you much success, uh, in your endeavors in the future. Uh, no, I don't think you're going away and I hope not because there is something about institutional knowledge that is needed in order for any organization, any board to thrive and be successful. Your comments about Hurford County Public Schools is, is right on target. It is the heart of this community. And how it beats, how the community beats. Uh, it took us a while, but we finally worked together as a board to, uh, achieve a goal of a new, uh, Haskett Elementary School. And for that, I thank you. And with that being said, once again, I would truly miss you, but I know that, uh, you are not far from us as we move forward in this thing we call public education. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, Dr. Wright. Okay.
I would like to make a comment at this time.
Oh, Miss Porter.
Sheila Porter. Uh, Mr. Shields, I've enjoyed working with you on the board and I will always remember one thing that wherever you go, you say. But you forgot it today. And that is, we need to toot our, on our horn.
Yes.
Louder and more often. And, um, and traveling with you and serving on the board, you always had great pride in Hurford County Schools and you're a greater concern in making our children higher achievers and the interest shown. It was a genuine interest that you showed in our county. Very dedicated and I'm sure as you step out that you will, when you stated that you would always be with the system, I really think that is very true. Uh, I've known you for years on a personal and professional level and I wish you the very best. Get a little rest, but I'm sure you won't. And I hope that, um, you'll always be with us because I'm sure over twenty years, you and your thoughts are always be with us all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
So, congratulations and enjoy your retirement, that's all. And thanks for everything that you have done in those twenty years for Hurford County Schools.
Thank you, Miss Porter.
You're welcome.
Mr. Shields, Dennis Deloach. Let me just say first of all, I appreciate the service for twenty years that you've given Hurford County Public Schools. Um, I can say this, that, um, now you don't have to worry about getting up, going to those meetings and trying, and calling us, trying to keep us together and trying to keep this board unified. I certainly do appreciate you doing that. I say enjoy your rest, enjoy it well because you surely deserve it. And again, thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Wright.
If I may, Mr. Shields, while everybody else is making comments, I think I'll jump in. I'm, I've had twenty years of experience with you, but the last two years that I have shared with you, I want you to know that I have enjoyed working under your leadership as our board chair. Um, thank you so much for the vision and the, um, that you have for this county and the hard work that you put in. I have enjoyed it. I'm so glad, um, that I was able to work with you and the rest of other members of this board. I've learned a lot, still learning, um, but I really do appreciate everything that you have done and shown me, uh, and working with me during these first two years on the board. I wish you the best, um, certainly, um, um, time for you to, I guess, after twenty years, I guess it's time to kinda do your own thing. But anyway, uh, continue to pray for us and keep us in your thoughts. Can't kill yourself.
Uh, I, I, at this time, I'd like to congratulate Eddie Hall, 'cause, um, he's gonna be the new board member. Uh, and I promise, I, I, I will go out a lot easier than Mr. Trump is going out, so. And if I'm a public.
I like that.
If there's anything that I can do for Eddie, uh, uh, 'cause I've known him since he was in first grade, since he was in the same grade as my son, Steven. And if there's anything I can ever do to help Eddie, I, I'll be more than willing to help. And I'll, hopefully will continue to, uh, uh, help the board whenever I can. If, if you need a, uh, someone in the, in, in the public to, uh, uh, to, to stand up for public education, please know that I'm always there. Anyway, uh, continue, Dr. Wright.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Shields. Don't, don't give me, Mr. Shields. All right, uh, we have a few more, uh, now, so speaking of plaques, uh, we also received, uh, uh, Mr. Hall and, and, uh, Mr. Deloach, you all will love to hear this, or, or maybe not. Uh, but we, uh, received a plaque, uh, presented to the Hurford County Public School System. I'm reading from the plaque. Uh, on behalf of the Row Row Chapter of Omega Phi Fraternity Incorporated, we want to say thank you for your services during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We are certain that the superintendent, board of education, principals, assistant principals, teachers, bus drivers, and all school personnel worked closely together during this pandemic to ensure that students were still receiving a quality education at meals at home. Despite these unprecedented times, your hard work and dedication show that the children in our community come first. We salute you. It's presented on November seventeenth, they actually brought it on the eighteenth, uh, but it was, uh, made up on the seventeenth, which is, uh, Omega's, uh, Founder's Day, I believe. And, uh, the basilisk is Alton Campbell and the committee chair, who is the gentleman that presented it, is Dexter Peel. So, we certainly are appreciative of that, uh, we, we're gonna display it in our district office, but certainly grateful that, uh, uh, the Q's thought enough of us to, uh, award us this plaque.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Yes.
All right. All right, uh, we, uh, send our deepest sympathies, thoughts and prayers to the Hollingsworth family, uh, for their lost Paul Hollingsworth, who serves as, uh, in our technology department. His mother passed away, uh, within last week and so we certainly are praying, uh, with and for that family. Um, I just wanna take a special note also to say that I am proud and thankful, uh, that once again, we have, um, the word I'll use is a clean audit, which means that our finances are intact in our district. Uh, we do not have all the money that we need. I wanna make sure that that's clear. Uh, but I am grateful to, uh, our finance employees and all of our employees for the work that they do to, uh, maintain us in good standing, uh, which allows us to be able to continue to operate, um, as we should for our students. So, uh, once again, congratulations to Mrs. Martin and, and all of the finance staff, uh, for that work. And it's been a clean audit every year that I've been here.
And, and another comment that I'd like to make that people forget is Hurford County Public Schools has the largest budget in the county. Let me say that again. We have the largest budget in the county and we deal with more grant money than anybody else. But, uh, you really are, and y'all's group are really to be here. And the, and the, and the, and all the, the money that comes in through the schools, through all the fundraisers and all that stuff, I mean, it's amazing that we can dot every I and cross every T and, and, and the schools do a great job, but, but, uh, Ms. Martin, once you get it here and put it in vault, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Bearfield Primary School, uh, congratulations to Gretchen Zock, who is one of the elementary teachers there, um, who also is a, uh, a, uh, leader, lea- teacher leader, uh, through our opportunity culture program. But she has been selected as a North Carolina English Association's Outstanding Literacy Teacher for the twenty-twenty-one school year, so congratulations to her. Uh, C S Brown High School, November seventeenth, they had an opportunity cultural virtual site visit, uh, uh, to explain more about that program and what's going on with it. And also on the nineteenth, they had a parent sta- students, faculty, staff virtual communication day, uh, in which they had, uh, communications about the happenings around the school, uh, for everyone to participate in. Early College High School held their ECU virtual tour. Uh, during the past few days, they completed their spring registration and conferencing with students for the Royal Milkshewan Community College classes. They hosted a freshman student and parent night where they had Dean Green share tips for student success. They hosted the virtual Title One Student Showcase on November nineteenth, where they highlighted the work of their students. I got an opportunity to look at some of that work and it was absolutely outstanding. Uh, November twentieth, the Early College High School staff shared their stories as a part of the team building activity for, uh, for the school year. Um, also, Mr. Jerome Solomon, you might remember, um, a few, a little bit over a month ago, I believe, was, he was in a very major, major, major car accident. Um, and, uh, we got an update during a medical visit with the heart specialist. Jerome reported the main artery that was repaired has healed as expected. So, he has been released from the heart specialist. He's now taking therapy in Windsor and he, uh, still has some work to do to get his weight bearing back together and all of that. Uh, but I've got a picture of him, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm gonna send to you, uh, the past and present. Um, and it's very obvious that, uh, he, uh, he, he certainly is a testimony of, of a miracle. I'll just say it that way. Uh, doing well, recovering, still doing, you know, still progressing, but we're certainly, uh, proud of that and, uh, we've got, uh, a way to communicate with him, to send him, um, cards or what have, whatever as, as we need to. And, uh, we'll have, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I have Mrs. Parker forward that information to you along with the address, uh, for Mr. Solomon, should you, uh, choose to do so. Uh, and lastly, um, after talking with, um, several of the board members, we're gonna do, uh, the next two meetings, the December meeting and the January meeting, uh, at least will, uh, be virtual meetings and, um, information will be forthcoming. We're going to, uh, work on converting those to video. For the most part, the board, board members have been, uh, calling in. Uh, before the next meeting, we're gonna try, uh, video Zoom conferencing, um, where, uh, we'll, we'll have a little bit more interaction, uh, for the December and January meeting. And then decisions will be made on how we, uh, progress, uh, after that. Mr. Chairman, that's, that's it. All of them to thank you again for the service that, uh, you have provided to us and to me as a superintendent.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hall, uh, you're up next for the state board highlights and your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I will be, uh, brief, uh, as we, as you know, the state board met, uh, the first of the month, uh, to deal with some, uh, issues. Uh, some of the highlights of the board meeting was, uh, this new initiative. The state board approved nineteen school districts in the state to implement the North Carolina Education Core Program. And this is this new program, uh, from the governor's office, dealing with securing, uh, help from volunteers out in the community to help during this pandemic time in tutoring or, 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 or just being available, uh, to our districts and to the community. And there were nineteen school districts that were, uh, approved by the state board to implement this program. Uh, something of interest to me and some short interest to all, the Center for Safe Schools, we've seen an update. And the update of all the things it talked about, there was a nineteen percent increase in suicide talk among our students over last year. And that's a nineteen percent increase and as well as, uh, self-harm, like, uh, you know, cutting one and this, cutting oneself and things of that nature. Uh, so we need to continue to look at the total child as we look at providing, uh, opportunities for children in Hur- in Hurford County. Uh, and the state. Uh, the board also proven to update its school-based mental health policy. Every school district must have this policy in place and the board only just, uh, clarified, uh, definitions for people who can work with students and et cetera, et cetera. Like the principal, the assistant principal, teachers, and the school system can, uh, can identify other people in the community to be a part of the mental health policy. Uh, the board also officially approved the employment of, uh, Allison Schaper. If you remember Allison, Allison used to be with the North Carolina School Boards Association. Allison now, January one, will become the general counsel for the State Board of Education. Uh, we're pleased to, uh, to have Allison on board with us. Uh, everyone knows Allison and everyone knows her expertise and, and what she does. The state board also gave us preliminary, uh, look at our budget. The state budget for the State Board of Education, inclusive of the state, uh, uh, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction budget, putting it together, uh, to present to the general assembly and management come January one. If you have any ideas about the state budget, uh, the state school board's budget, uh, please, uh, give me a holler. And while I have the floor, for comments, if I could, Mr. Chairman, uh, I want to, uh, thank, uh, Dr. Wright. I think he was on a, uh, a panel, a forum panel with the North Carolina School Board Association Conference a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And apparently you hit a nerve with, when you were talking about, uh, uh, internet connectivity, uh, lack of in rural districts. As a result of that, I'm gonna send you some of the emails I received and, and, uh, information concerning how to solve that problem.
Okay, sir, good, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, apparently it went over well. With those who listened to it, uh, was really concerned about internet connectivity. With, uh, those who listened to it, uh, was really concerned about internet connectivity in rural areas.
Okay.
I also want to say also, I did look at the slideshow done by the Early College Staff, uh, the principal and her staff. I don't know, have everyone seen that slideshow? Well, it was well done. It was well done, uh, in, in looking at the staff, the curriculum. Uh, Mitt Burns, I think is her name, uh, put it together. If you haven't seen it, I think, Dr. Wright, you sent the site?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's correct. Right.
It was well done. I thought it was an excellent job and, and talking about, uh, Early College and its staff and the curriculum and things of that nature. And with all that being said, I thank you for giving me the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, uh, to share these, uh, brief comments. I do wish everyone a safe, uh, holiday season. Be careful, maintain social distances, wear the mask, and wash their hands. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mrs. Deloach, coming?
Oh, yes, sir. Thank, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Shields. First of all, I certainly want to send my sympathy to Paul Hollis- Hollisworth, his wife and his family for the loss of his mom. Um, I, I knew Paul, uh, I know him pretty well and I actually taught his wife. Um, I certainly want to encourage everybody though, uh, all of our personnel, our staff members, and everyone just to continue to be safe during these difficult times. I really believe that there, we, we are expecting more difficult times to come. So, it's going to be important for everybody to do all that we can to make sure that our families and our friends stay safe. So, have a thanks, a good Thanksgiving, uh, as best you can. And, uh, let's see what happens for Christmas and everybody just remain safe. Thank you so much.
Uh, Ms. Porter?
I would like to extend my prayers and sympathy to Mr. Hollingsworth's family at this time to let him know that we're praying for him to get through this. I also would like to commend our finance department, um, and her, her staff. Um, this is not the first time. It, it, it's been over five years or more that she has worked along with her staff, Dr. Wright, you included, uh, in perfecting an audit. I'm sure it's not as easy as it looks to get every, uh, point covered. So, I would like to thank her for the hard work and, and continuing to be a perfectionist at her job. Also, would like to thank everybody involved. Parents, staff, faculty, whoever completed those surveys, turned them back in. We say we are all in for learning. That's a prime example of that. So, that Dr. Wright could, uh, get his numbers, present them to us. Uh, would like to thank you for participating in, in the service, in the survey. I wish everyone a very safe and happy holidays. Enjoy your families. It may be a little different, but I'm sure you're creative and just be safe. Mr. Shields, again, thank you so much for your twenty years of service. Everyone have a great and safe holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Dr. Shannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief. Uh, again, let me congratulate you for twenty years of service. And like I said earlier, the last two years that I've had the privilege of working with you, I've really, I really have enjoyed it. I want to congratulate Mr. Hall and Mr. Hall on their, on their winning the seats to the board again. Mr. Hall again and Mr. Eddie Hall for the first time. I've had the privilege to talk with him since he, uh, since he won the election and let him know that, uh, we're a board that works together, uh, we all have the same focus, all in for learning. And then we're looking forward to working with him on the board as well. I do want to send my prayers and condolences to the Hollingsworth family. I don't know Paul as well as some of you do, but whenever you lose a loved one, it's, um, it's painful and devastating. So, we do send our prayers and condolences. Um, to everybody that's, that's, that's working with the Hurford County Public School System, the teachers, administrators, parents, everybody. Uh, want to thank them for a great job that they're doing, particularly the ones that are filling out those surveys. And Dr. Wright, I don't care what we do as we try to do a reentry, uh, we're not going to please everybody. Uh, the, all, all across this, uh, nation, people are complaining, some want to go back to school, some want to continue to go virtual. And so, we've got to, uh, do what's best for our children. So, we're looking forward to that, uh, your recommendation coming to us so that, uh, one day we'll be able to make a decision. I'm praying that we'll make the right one. Do want to wish, um, um, Ms. Martin and her financial staff, uh, I just want to thank them for doing such a great job and, uh, getting us another successful audit this year. Um, thank you so much, Daddy. I want to wish everybody, uh, safe and healthy Thanksgiving holiday. Stay safe, um, and, um, we'll see what happened with Christmas. You all have a good one. Take care. Uh, Mr. Shields, again, I've enjoyed working with you.
Thank you, Dr. Shannon. Um, the next board meeting is, uh, December the fourteenth?
Yes, sir. That's what we're recommend.
If there, if there, if, if there's any reason that someone can't be there, because this will be the, uh, organizational meeting plus the, uh, swearing in or swearing at the, uh, a meeting, pardon the meeting. Um, maybe the swearing in will come before the swearing at, so, uh, in, 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 anyway, um, uh, that'll be on the fourteenth and, and those, uh, arrangements will be, uh, forthcoming.
Yes, sir.
Uh, once again, I'd like to thank the, uh, board for working with me, uh, as you have for the, the time I've been on the board and, um, and for the people who are not on the board anymore that I've worked with. I appreciate them. The main thing is, is, um, I'd like to thank the employees of Hurford County Public Schools. Um, you guys are the greatest and, uh, uh, I always go back to something Mr. Hall said, and I don't know how long ago it was, probably fifteen years ago. He says that, uh, he told, he said in a public meeting that Hurford County Public Schools was the shining star in the northeast and, and we really are and it's because of the employees of Hurford County Public Schools. Each and every one, everybody pulls together when they have to, um, uh, and, and, um, it's, it's, it's just been great. Anyway, that being said, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at this time, Sheila Porter.
Second at motion. Go ahead.
All right. Then promptly moving second. All those who say they will say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, uh, motion is confirmed. Y'all have a great holidays. Thank you.
You're saying, sir.
Goodbye.